All right, I'll pass the word to someone else. And then someone will pledge their flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to everybody for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have the visitor of Citizens Forum. This is kind of any person that's in this court of counsel on schedule, on agenda. I speak at one form of action they have taken on these items at the meeting. Linda?
Linda, yes, second.
All right, next up, we have presentations, just a little service for outgoing council members. One of the things that we have started, we started this back in 2006, I think Mike started this. So what we do is, next meeting, we're going to be swearing in new council members. And so what we do is, the meeting before that, we want to recognize the service of the council members who are going to be leaving. So that way, otherwise, it gets kind of tricky at the last meeting when we're bringing in the new members. We want the new members to come in and come right up on the count. So what we're going to do is, we have a couple of presentations here for Dan and for Gary. So, Linda? So one of the things that we do, is kind of our tradition here, is that we... Hold on a second.
Oh, we're anxious.
Okay, so what we do is, we have... Oh, Dan, you're up. It's for you. For Dan first. Sorry, my bad. Gary should go. Okay. So what this is, this is a flag we fly on Texas Independence Day, which is a Texas flag. Remember the flag?
Texas flag.
Texas flag on Texas Independence Day. And so this is a particular appreciation for your work for the city.
Thank you. That's enough, guys.
All right, Gary? Okay, so for Gary, we have the same thing, but so one of the things about Gary, so this is yours. Set kind of effect, this is a Texas flag for you with a certificate for your service. So we appreciate that. One more. Okay, then we have, so we all sit down in there. So the other thing that we have, that we have for Gary, Gary's actually served under three different mayors. For sure, I can say I was the tallest one of the three. Okay, that's the one, I think we can go. But Gary served a term back in 2005, then only began in 2006 through '08. Then when Ken Guthrie passed away, you know, I went to approach Gary, asked Gary if he could come back and step into Ken's shoes, which he did. And Gary's won a couple of times since then. So it's been quite a ride. And so what we wanted to do is, we had a little something extra. So what we did was, we talked to our resident cowboy, Lyle. And what we did for the old ball coach here...
All right.
We had...
Oh, wow.
We did a part of an out and in here.
See you.
What we did is, we had Lyle sign official NFL football. And Lyle was great about doing this. So Lyle signed it, and he also gave the Cowboys cap that he signed. And that's the official NFL football for the Cowboys. And so... All right, Coach, there you go. Don't throw that in the wrong room. There you go. There you go. We only had to pay his agent. All right. All right, next up, we have a public hearing scheduled by an opportunity for citizen comment on requested variance to allow a flatwork encouragement. So this is another one of our side yard variances. This one for 705 Stowe, which is the new house that was completed on Stowe. So the public hearing is open. Does anyone like to speak at the public hearing? All right, my motion to close the...
Where is it at, Mark? I mean, where...
It's right in the corner. It's the new house on Stowe. Down on the right-hand side, 705.
So that would be a novelty in Stowe?
No, around the corner.
Okay, further than?
Yeah, you sit right behind it. That's Bill, right there.
Bill Freeman, the Freeman people are...
Okay, has it started yet?
No, it's not. It's finished. It's finished. If you remember, his front yard, his front yard was an odyssey. It was an adventure, his front yard. It breathes.
Layla, in some way, you would say.
Just across the street. So what we do, remember, just to refresh everyone's memory, whenever there's a variance in the city, whenever there's a variance, we always have a public hearing to allow anybody to say anything they want about any variance before we move on, before the council considers. So that's what this is. This is just a open hearing to allow anybody to say anything. All right, my motion to close the public hearing. Okay, all right. My motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
So it was the second?
Okay. All right, so then we'll come back to that on the regular agenda. All right, so next up, we have the consent agenda. Items of consent agenda seem to be self-explanatory and enacted by one motion. So in the consent agenda, we have the direction and the resolution as well as the minutes. So does anybody have any changes to any of the items on the consent agenda? Any changes?
Motion approved the consent agenda.
I have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Who's got the second? All those in favor?
Do you want to hold that up?
No, I'm sorry. All right, all right, so that's good there. All right, next up, we have on the regular agenda. Okay, variance request for flat from Crettsman in the side yard for driveway at 705 Stowe. Okay, so, Bill? You're up.
Okay.
So over here, probably even... So Bill is the homeowner on this house, which is built on Stowe. Chip Hill built it. It was a complete...
In May, what happened, you know, one year?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, in a year.
I just remember the front yard took around a sodic like multiple times, and I know there was... By the way, Bill's house, let me just... That's why I had the sewer problem with the construction, so that caused us to now require camry to be done in sewers now with new houses. Because of his house, you know, his first day in, sewer overflowed.
Yeah, on Mother's Day.
On Mother's Day, it was on mine. Yes. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so I'm just looking for a variance to be able to pull, you know, to back out and call it back and forth. So currently, right now, it's at 22 feet, and I'm asking for it to be 28. And that's where it said encouragement.
So if I'm reading that right, you have, looks like it's five feet from the property line to the edge of the...
That's correct.
And the...
And then I also have a letter from the neighbor, you know, saying it's okay to go ahead and do that, so I did get her permission.
So the neighbor on the other side is Zorich. And they have a, one of those big botherages as well, and they're five feet off the line.
They're five feet off the line.
So they're the exact same mirror image of this.
Ten feet, ten foot square there.
Yes, exactly. And our code is 28 feet to be off of the, 28 feet for a garage. And I went and I went to Bill's garage, and I don't think I, it's hard for me to get the golf cart, because the way the tightness of that first bay is, it's pretty tight, you know, not any good men to get in that garage, so...
This is, this is an area of zoning that we, it's tight, but we didn't really know how to loosen it up. Now we have better ideas.
We're going to come back and revisit this. We just have, I mean, by, my actual driveway from my own house is on the property line. It's curved, it swings, but it actually gets within a foot of the property line, because that's what the code was back then, the old days. Flatwork was exempt. We kind of accidentally put it in there trying to keep the driveways from merging.
Yeah, we were trying to, we didn't want common driveways. And this is a case where it's skirt there, so I...
Yeah, so this is something we know we have to fix, which we're going to do in the fall. We're going to come back and revisit this.
I'm personally okay with that.
Does anybody have any questions? Football coach? Okay, Coach, any other questions? Liz, do you have any question? Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the variance.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so who's got the second? All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, thanks, sir. All right, next up. All right, so Ed, this is your top, it's your baby.
My baby?
Sir?
Okay. Well, before introducing our special speaker tonight, I want to take a minute and recognize the efforts of Cheryl France. Most of you probably know Cheryl. Cheryl, stand up, make sure everybody knows who you are. Sit down real fast, step it down. There you go. Cheryl's been helping me a great deal on our Dark Skies project, and she's been leading our educational effort. And she's the one who has scheduled several sessions this month, I believe, here at Town Hall. I don't have those dates with me, but one session for the children in the residents here, and then also then two sessions, I believe, for adults. One date is in the evening, and one is on a Saturday. In addition to that, and this effort is to educate everyone in the town about the project and what we're trying to accomplish, but it's also an important effort in terms of our application to the International Dark Sky Association. And so in addition to those sessions, Cheryl has successfully worked with the Little Elm School District. And again, I don't remember that date off the top of my head, but...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of May, yeah. And she will be along with some assistants, providing a session, if you will, a fun session at that, for about 150 fifth graders, I think.
Fifth graders.
Yeah. So that will, those efforts are all because of her efforts, and so I wanted to recognize Cheryl for that. So then, we do have a very special guest to share some information about the International Dark Sky Organization and the efforts. Gordon Meredith is a lifelong resident of Denton, has worked for the Community Development Division for the City of Denton for almost 25 years. He's long worked to reduce light pollution and light trespass and glare. He's been a member of the International Dark Sky Association for about nine, nine years? Or, excuse me, since 2009. That is nine years. And is currently working with the Caprock Canyon State Park on their dark sky application, as well as he's initiating talks with other Texas state parks as well. So I've asked Gordon to just come and share some information about what Dark Skies is about, and hopefully they improve our understanding of it as well. I believe he's got some technical support here as well, so we could give a real warm welcome to Gordon Meredith.
Thank you, Cheryl. Seeing members of council and mayor of arts, I just want to tell you that I'm pleased to be here to address the council and the citizens of the village concerning the International Dark Sky Association. I'm certainly not an employee or staff member of the IDA. If any of you are familiar with Habitat for Humanity Works, the International Dark Sky Association works in a very similar way. We are all, I think they only have about seven employees. The rest of us, thousands of people who are volunteers that do the work to further the preservation of dark skies. What I'm going to do first, so I don't have to actually talk for my whole time, I'm going to cheat here, and I'm going to show, if you don't mind, we have a presentation that's under, this is on someone's computer.
Want to see the presentation, or you...
Yeah, so, yeah, if you don't mind.
Is that the video?
No, the one...
I want to see the video.
The video, yes, sir. We'll show that first, it's about six minutes long.
There we go.
There you go.
Bright lights at night also directly affect humans. Drivers and pedestrians temporarily blinded by poorly designed lights have suffered tragic accidents. Light pollution poses a solid threat to our health. Exposure to light at night disrupts the circadian rhythms that regulate our sleep cycles. People working at night under bright lights or living in light-hearted cities face a high risk of developing diseases such as breast and prostate cancer. Here is a night sky with typical light pollution. On a good night, only the brighter stars and planets pierce the glow. This is what the night sky would look like if we could remove the light pollution. That faint band of light stretching across the sky is the Milky Way, our home galaxy. A cause of light pollution, all people have never seen it. Astronomers know all too well the properties caused by a lighting of night. They need to clear dark skies to study the many fascinating objects in the universe. Light pollution simply washes out their view of the cosmos. Lighting up the night sky wastes money and fossil fuels. To keep a one-hundred watt light bulb turned on every night for a year takes the equivalent energy output from burning half a ton of coal. Lots of time with millions of lights blazing up from Earth, the cost of energy we use to light up the night is colossal. While lighting is needed, there are some simple things we can do to ensure that it's affordable, friendly, energy efficient, and helps preserve dark skies. We can replace light fixtures that send light up to the sky with ones that direct light down exactly where we want it. They're called fully shielded fixtures. We can also rehydrate only the places that need it. And of course, we can just turn off unnecessary lights. Those are smart ways to use lighting. They offer several solutions to problems caused by light pollution. We have a choice between wasting resources by sending light to the sky, or wanting to use light more responsibly. Light pollution is a problem which has given us all. Together, we can bring back the dark light to our earth.
Oh, actually, no, we love to...
Do you want to link the last slide?
Yeah. Yeah.
It'd probably be easier to see the slide.
Yeah, go to the PowerPoint presentation. Is there a remote, or do I have to tell you next slide, next slide?
We're looking for the remote, could find it.
No problem. Okay, I won't be pointing at that. This computer, your...
Here.
I'll follow with it. All right, well, okay. I didn't write this presentation, this PowerPoint presentation, but Cindy Longo-Cassidy is the chapter leader for Texas. Right now, the IDA is in a little bit of, well, it's not really in flux, but Texas is such a very large area, and they're talking about breaking up, so one IDA chapter for Texas is breaking up, and North Texas would certainly be one. So she wrote this, and it's really kind of geared more towards communities that are considering coming a dark sky.
That's just a laser pointer, it's not a, just say next.
Oh, next.
Oh, it should work.
That's a, that's a slide slipper, too?
Oh, it does, okay. It does, okay. All right, well, some of the challenges we have without, well, I just wasn't quite able to direct it, are glare, safety insecurity, and light trespass. That's like, you know, lights from other sources coming in your windows, and like the, what we just saw losing tonight. The amount of wasted money and energy is great. I believe the IDA believes that, just in the United States, that over $10 billion a year is wasted lighting. It's not lighting that does any good, it's the lighting that goes up into space and out of people's eyes. So we're talking about quite a bit of money and impact. And there's also impact to the community, and impact on nature and health, and if you're an astronomer, certainly obscure view of stars in the sky. All right, now this is, the fellow who made these pair of slides here did a really good job of this. Now, that's a typical, it's probably a twin bulb floodlight on the side of someone's house, and you see it all the time. I know in Denton, I hear police officers complaining about this from time to time, that there'd be two of them right over a garage pointing down the driveway right into the street, and so a police officer driving on patrol at night, they lose their night vision, and they can't see if, you know, the Boston Strangler is right there in the shadows. And when you shield this light, looky there, you couldn't see that person. That's not a gag photo, again, that was actually, that person was standing there both times, you just can't see him, because of the, the human eye is, you know, kind of stops down when it's faced with glare, just like a camera lens. And so, bad lighting is not secure lighting. That's some, that's kind of misconception that a lot of people have, that you overlight things, and you think you're getting better lighting, but in fact, you're not. This is an example of, of two, this was a house, and you see that they had like a 60-watt light bulb over the, over the light and over the landing, and, you know, the steps themselves are in deep shadows. But now, this was just sort of a make-do thing, that someone put a pineapple to the end. I don't recommend that for, for communities, but this individual, in this case, did that, and you see it directed the light down onto those steps, the same light, the same fixture, it's just somewhat modified. You can actually buy pretty elegant solutions to, to this problem without actually having to, you know, rip something out of a pineapple juice can, but that's what, what this individual did, and made the lighting a lot better. Here is a typical apartment, I know you don't have any multiple cars in here, but those are particularly egregious lights. What I would not want to live in, if those are bedroom windows up there, I would not want to be living in those. That courtyard is way overlit. There are deep shadows at the stairways, which is exactly where you leave the light, but instead, you've got deep shadows areas, so the sides of the buildings are well lit. You know, most burglars are like geckos, you know, climb up the side of the building. In fact, you know, so all, I would say 80% of this lighting was wasted. It actually counterproductive. This is a, I believe this is a college campus somewhere with like a jogging path, and you see that the actual path is really quite, is really quite dark. All the lining is up in people's eyes, so it doesn't make things very safe for the joggers. It's, and you see, this was actually some sort of pricey application, but the lighting engineer hadn't really thought through what they were doing. Here's another example. I would not want to live in that house, if those are bedroom windows, and I imagine that probably are, they're a little light, you know, these are very tight. I know, we're all talking about what your lot lines are here. I'm sure y'all are quite a bit larger than this, but in this particular town, this is not unusual to have like probably five, six-foot lot lines of the building lines off of the parking line, and you've got this light that really doesn't do any good. It's shining in their own window, and shining in the neighbor's window, but look in the yard, it's dark and deep shadows. Here's an example of, I know, there's a term for these lights, they're called acorns, because they kind of look like acorns. They're becoming all the rage these days, because they, they kind of go back to the Victorian period, and that's a bit from a stylistic standpoint, but you have to remember that in Victorian period, they used gas light, and not, and not...
That's what we have in half of our city.
Yes, yes. And, yeah, there are ways around that. There are some retrofits, there are some workarounds to that, but just, just those straight lights are, as you see, that most of the light is actually going up, and a lot is going, some of it's going down. Right under it is not particularly well lit. And they, they was really, they got their, they got their issues, because they are not, they're not well shielded. This is an example of light trespass. This is, I think this is like two views of the same situation. You've got a really bright, probably a barn light, or something, a wall pack on the side of this apartment or motel thing, and it's shining right in this, in front of this house. Once again, I wouldn't want to sleep in those bedroom windows right there, because...